Welcome. All right, great. We are there. Waiting the thing to come up. Yeah, welcome everyone. Uh, we are here at Power Hour and we are joined by three amazing guests. Um, those who have joined us already, um, as you know regularly, please definitely share the live. Um, show love, comment any questions as the discussion is going on. Uh, if you have any questions, um, I'm going to just give our guest name and then start with our connection question. And roll right into it as again I set up, we're joined by Melissa Shobor, Ashley. Okay, so you're gonna say your own last name because I don't want to mess it up. Only I should have asked before.
Oh, it's Esposito.
Esposito, all right. And then of course Shaquille Carbon, who's familiar here. Uh, and everything. So yeah, to get us started, as I said, we do it a connection question and we're in the holiday time. Everybody know I love the holiday season. So from you all, um, just, you know, like in general, like what is your favorite? Holiday memory, like your overall favorite holiday memory. Um, we'll just kind of like go, we'll start with, um, Ashley and then go to Shaquille and then Melissa.
Um. Trying to think, favorite holiday memory, uh, probably like this Halloween, like part of the reason why I bought my, like, why we bought our house in this neighborhood is because Halloween's always really hype. And this is the first year that like, my son got to like dress up and it was like a big hit. Like he had a whole scene for like Super Mario Brothers and he was dressed like Mario.
Okay. So yeah.
Yeah, so my favorite holiday memory, I didn't have a lot of time to think about it. So it's probably one year I got this like Valentine's Day gift. And I was sitting in class, I was a freshman at university in the anthropology course. And I was like really nervous about the gift. And so I asked this, uh, woman who was sitting next to me, like, what do you think about this gift? It was like a Charlie Brown car. It was like, you know, something that I would get. And she was like, I think it's pretty corny, but you know, it's the thought that counts. And I was like, well damn, uh, that was pretty rude. And then, uh, she fell in love with me. I fell in love with her and started a beautiful friendship.
Okay, wow, that is awesome. Love the friendship, Melissa.
Um, last year my child, um, was a B'nai Mitzvah, so, um, you know, uh, it's a rite of passage in Judaism. Um, so this year for the Jewish High Holidays for the New Year too. Um, they could go to the Bima, that's like the pulpit and, um, read from the Torah and recite. So that was like a big parent proudness, excellent. Memory, even if I could only watch it over Zoom because only one parent could go with COVID. Um, but it was, it was still a really like heartwarming, neat thing to see them, um, take on the roles and responsibilities of an adult.
That is amazing. That is amazing. Uh, comments, please, uh, comment you all's thoughts. Uh, I mean, you know, you're all, you all's favorite holiday moment, um, and mine's was, I just so many lot, like I said, I love the holidays, so. Everything is good, but one that particularly sticks out to me is, um, around two thousand and twelve. Um, group of young folks that I was working with, we had a holiday dinner, um, and everything and all of us was just, it was just like a super amazing time. Um, exchanging gifts and just watching everybody kind of like show their gratitude and, uh, talk about, you know, things, the experience that came, it was just a beautiful. Moment, um, and I could talk about it forever, but I'm not because we are here today to talk about elected school boards. And since we have you all in your time, I want to make sure that we, you know, respect it and get right to it. Um, so I will throw this question out there first for you, Melissa. And you know, I just thought the questions around or whoever feel like they want to answer it. Uh, but we know currently that Baltimore has an appointed school board. Is this normal? Are most school boards elected or appointed? Um, and are there any trends and what kinds of places have elected versus appointed school boards?
Sure. So I'm, I'm gonna be here for, for as backup to, um, Ash and Shaq, but, um, I'm happy to talk data and stats and then, uh, toss it off to them. So in Maryland, there are, um, twenty-three counties and Baltimore City across the state. And of the, so it's twenty-four total, of the twenty-four of them, Baltimore City is the only one with a wholly appointed board. So every member of the school board right now is appointed. Um, in November of two thousand and twenty-two, so next year, about a year from now, we'll get two elected board members, but they'll increase the overall size of the board. So it will grow. They won't replace existing slots. So we'll still be among the very few in Maryland that don't have either an all-elected board, which is lots of places in the state, um, or a majority elected board. So we'll still be in a very small minority of places in the state, um, where everyone is appointed. And so in Baltimore, you're, it's an appointments process with the mayor's office and a number of community panel folks. So like, I'm a member of the parent and community advisory board here in Baltimore. We're one of the folks on that community panel. Um, there are some other groups like the ACL you represented to. Um, and in terms of trends, yeah, it's pretty unusual. Lots of places around the state have made the transition to an elected board. So Baltimore County, our neighbor, you know, kind of north and sort of surrounding us now has more elected seats in Arundel, made the transition to have more elected seats. Um, Wycomico County made the transition to have more elected seats and other really big districts like Chicago, um, are making that transition to Chicago. The state legislature just passed a bill to make them elected now as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else is okay. Want to add anything? Um, so, all right. Thank you so much, Melissa. And I take, definitely take note to what you said. Um, Ashley, uh, and Shaquille just a bit, um, on this also, what is your vision for what the Baltimore should, for what the Baltimore City School Board should be like?
Yeah, I am very pro like elected seats because, and part of the reason why, just the nature of a campaign, like you have to actually go out and talk to the community. And so I think that's like a valuable piece, um, in practice that, like having elected seats would bring to the school board. So having those relationships already built with the community so that if the community has issues, they ha- already have somebody that they, they're familiar with, that they can go to with their problems that has, uh, like actual power to change things. So I, I do think that direct line of communication is brought in by having an elected school board.
Well, that question, Tyrone, simply put, it should reflect the values of the community. Um, it should reflect the city as a whole. It should reflect the city racially, economically, religiously. Um, it should be a better reflection of, um, the wants and the needs of the people who live in the city, the true stakeholders. What it should not be, though I know that wasn't your question, is not essentially a good old boys' club or, uh, a club of who's who of Baltimore and who can get the mayor. Um, to support them, support their application, um. And yeah, it should certainly reflect, um, the wants, the needs and desires of the people who would actually live in the city, who send their kids to Baltimore City Public Schools. Um, who volunteers in the schools, uh, and the people who work in the schools.
Thank you. Could we discuss the problems of having an appointed board? Um, you know, anyway, Ashley, jump right, you look, jump right into it, jump right into it.
Well, I think like having an, like an appointment process, because I, I actually applied for one of the vacancies and like seeing the process, um. For me, as somebody that's just a community member, or not just, I, I'm very proud of that. Uh, I'm a community member and I'm a parent of a young kid that I plan on having in Baltimore City Public Schools from like start to finish. So, you know, even applying, like, it, it, it does come off very like, like a job application, which implies that, you know, and I don't, I don't really know, like historically if this is true, but that credentials are gonna carry more weight than like, you know, somebody's like voice. So if you make it past the first step and you actually get to the interviews, which I did not, because I don't, I, you know, I'm not a PhD or anything like that. But I do have a very distinct point of view, um, and I am very involved in my community. So I think people like that slip through the cracks if it's just like a, a transactional process where it's just a job application and you know, it's not deeply rooted in the community.
Thank you.
You know, I don't, um, know of, uh, many places. It's like anytime I start to talk, my cat just wants to walk across my screen. Like I'm here, give me attention. Anyways, uh, it seems, you know, to me that to some degree, the CEO of the public school system has some say in who her bosses are. And I don't really know what it'd be place, uh, where people can choose their own bosses. I remember when I was a Baltimore City Public High School teacher, um. I remember going to a dinner with Dr. Santalisa. I remember her saying that, um, one of the reasons she remains in Baltimore is because of the makeup of the board. And, um, she's like, you know, I love my bosses, um, and sometimes, you know, and I can say this as a boss, sometimes when, you know, people love you, probably because you're not holding them to account. And, and you know, just will follow logically that they will let that point. But, um, for me, it's an accountability issue, uh, because we need a system of checks and balances and your board, um, is supposed to allow for that to happen. Uh, when it comes to decisions that the CEO wants to make, um, and, and really, um, because the CEO is in a appointed position. If the board seats at least were elected and they would be representing the interest of the people and right now, they're, they don't have to represent the interest of the people. They just need to represent the interest of the person who appointed them in the first place. Uh, and make no mistake about it, although there's this community panel, there's, you know, you know, this, this veneer of, uh, you know, people are choosing you. At the end of the day, you're appointed by the mayor's, the mayor's decision. So you're beholding to whatever it is that the mayor wants, right? And we want to strike that away from the system and make them beholding to what, um, the people, the citizens, the voters, the parents of Baltimore City want. I think another, um, issue is that, um, board members are not paid. I know some people probably watch like, wait a minute, like some of these, because like Ashley said, I'm not a PhD. Some of these people have PhDs, they work at universities, they have these high-paying jobs. This school board, we want people who are everyday Baltimore people to be able to run, um, for the board. And, you know, this is really like a second, uh, you know, the amount of work that they have to do. Um, and so there's no incentive for, you know, the aunties or the uncles who just really care, right? Who are volunteering, you know, at their, you know, local community school. Uh, who might be a volunteer coach on a, on a baseball team or something for that. So there's, there, there, there's no infrastructure to support them to even be able to sit on the school board, right? And so that's something that we want to address. Uh, and also, uh, and I just have to say this because, um, I was a young person in Baltimore who I think was, uh, co-opted by, um, the white nonprofit infrastructure, just, you know, the black kid who's articulate and coming, and can come and speak and, you know, put a census together. And Tyrone, we can have a whole conversation about that because I know we have some shared experiences in that world, but it kind of happens on the school board as well, right? Like, you know, the school board commission, they have no real power, right? So their position, um, for the most part, it's really just pomp and circumstance and, you know, it's really no substance there, right? Um, and so that's another issue. I think we're having this whole appointed process and the way it's currently structured. That's something else that we're trying to address as well. And, um, legislation that I think we'll talk about later.
Got you. So, and go ahead, Melissa.
Oh, I was just gonna add really quickly, um, to, to both Ash and Shaq's point, the current process for appointing members, like with Ash not getting an interview. So people meet the minimum criteria that's in the statute and the law to apply for one of these openings. And then this very small group within the mayor's office decides who goes to the community panel and is worthy of an interview versus not worthy of an interview, which isn't transparent, it's not accountable. Parents and community members don't know if the people who applied get an interview or don't get an interview and what process. So it really takes this, you know, big, hopefully large number of applicants and winnows them down to this really tiny number of people who are deemed acceptable. It by some criteria by members of the mayor's office with no explanation. So that's really substituting their judgment even for the community panel that the law imagined would have this power, which to Shaq's point, still imperfect, not as good as an elected board, but like, we're not even letting the community panel have the power that they're supposed to have.
Yeah, and just to chime in on that, I did make a recommendation to the mayor's office before that process started, like, because, you know, I've been a part of like, application process for like awards and things like that. And typically there's a rubric where people can judge the applications and then put forth whatever. But I think if, if, if there's a community panel in place, I think it makes sense for them to be able to judge their own applicants. For several reasons. One, they get familiar with the applicants and can also like, you know, we had situations in our group where, where we would champion somebody that was like overlooked because like maybe in black and white, they didn't seem the most like fancy or anything like that, but you could, you could see their heart and, and depending on who had that application and who could champion that, like it would really resonate with people. So I think having like that diverse panel, they should have the first touch of the applicants, hundred percent. Because if they're trusted by law to like review these applicants, they should have like total autonomy from like the mayor's office or anybody else.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Melissa, for, uh, thank you, um. To the, so I wanted to go back. Um, I started kind of a few Ashley and talking about how, um, you know, because you didn't have a PhD, you know, like you didn't make it further. So we know, or, or in my experience with Baltimore and elections in a way, you know, elections work, um, and everything like that. If we were to have an elected process here, um, with it, you know, like, kind of like, what would that look like so that we make sure that, you know, that the same thing, because it kind of happened because you get popularity here for votes, right? Like you still get those who have these particular standings, um, for whatever reason, right? Like they get elected and be in these spaces. So, um, I guess my question is, is there any, is there anything that like shows that that kind of works different when you're electing a school board? Or are we gonna, are like things gonna be put in place or hopefully things be put in place to make sure that that doesn't happen?
I think it's really dependent on the community, um, because even, even in other elections, right? Like there's like a formula, a way to like win and like, like you said, like the popularity and stuff, but I think because this race has never been done, this is an opportunity for all the people who have like been screaming into the void or haven't felt like they've been heard about like their concerns with the schools and everything to really like organize around like these two seats, because that's like potentially, you know, your voice. And because, and because it's hasn't been done before, there's no upper hand that anybody has. Nobody really knows, like they, you know, people can run stats and stuff and say like which, how much money you need or how many votes you need, but honestly, like, we don't know. So I think, I think it's up, it's really dependent on, you know, like parents, kids, like teachers, everybody to, to make sure that day one, like these two seats, that they're actually like grassroots campaigns and not just an extra like stepping stone for something.
No doubt, no doubt. Okay, just.
People are actually from the community. I'm sorry to jump in there, Tyrone. And I, and I, and I decided to say that because I, I got word that somebody, uh, I'm not gonna say no names. And I'm not gonna point no elbows, but somebody, uh, you know, was thinking about running for, uh, one of the two seats, who, my God. I, 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 I wouldn't vote for this person if I was court ordered and I'm gonna just leave it at that.
Okay. Okay, we will just leave it at that. I do, I do want to ask, um, well, actually, I'm gonna, we are definitely, you talked about legislation, we're definitely going to get to what's up in Annapolis. I'm gonna do the little X I want to give, you know, definitely enough time to go over what's there also. Um, and to this though, what will we say are the steps to changing the board structures? Um, and I, you know, I think this is like, people need to understand, I want to make sure that our listeners and, you know, folks that are here, you know, because of our audience, like they understand, um, everything. Um, that's why we go. So I want to thank you all for being here. And of course, those who are here and thanking the folks for being here, we thank you also. Please share the live. And if you do have questions, definitely comment your, um, questions for our guests. But yeah, could someone, you know, for, um, give us?
You want me to take it or?
Yes, yeah, yeah, please.
Um, so in all honesty, the process for moving to a wholly elected board, so everybody's elected is a little unclear. But we think probably one of the avenues that could happen would be legislation in Annapolis. So even though Baltimore City, um, is its own entity, right? Wouldn't we have a mayor? How school boards are made up, who they're composed of, is in state statute, in state law. And that's not just for Baltimore City, that's for every other county in the state. So normally what happens for a bill of that nature is that the city or county delegation, so in this case, reps from Baltimore City have to say, yes, we're gonna push the bill forward. And as long as the Baltimore City delegation said yes, other members basically say, look, you know, not, I don't live there, not really our jurisdiction. If the city supports it, fine. But there are significant differences of opinion among the city delegates now, notably, and it's no secret. You know, delegate Maggie McIntosh has opposed an elected school board for a long time and she's a powerful member of the House. She's gonna retire. Um, so who knows what'll happen after her retirement, but there are significant differences of opinion amongst representatives in Annapolis as to whether or not we should have an elected board. Now, I think we should all be asking them why and how, like, why can't we have the things that other places have and you know, our, our families and caregivers are no less interested in our schools and our children and our outcomes and all of those things than anybody else. Um, in terms of changing other processes, like making the process with the community panel more transparent, that's really with Mayor Scott's office, right? So hit the mayor's office of child and family success runs that process, um, out of the mayor's office. And so, you know, people, if they have concerns about why somebody like Ash, who is really involved in her community and is a graduate of city schools, didn't even get an interview, we should be pushing hard on them to answer those questions and talk about why the process isn't more transparent and what their expectations are and how they're gonna make it more transparent and honor community needs and wishes.
Thank you. Thank you. I, okay, so, um, for, uh, if someone does want to know, so, uh, make it, are there others? Um, besides, um, Maggie, who's been, you know, open with being against, uh, school boards? Or has it just kind of been a toss-up that like, you know, not completely clear on everyone else or? If anyone knows.
I think it's kind of varied over time and, and, you know, without trying to air anyone's position or sort of before I've checked in with members of the coalition. Um, I, I think there's a skepticism among folks in Annapolis, probably long held over that like the school system doesn't do a very good job at running itself. And so if we give that power to the people, um, you know, what kind of mess might we cause? Um, and I don't think that's a good answer to why we can't have democracy for our school system, but, but there it is.
Okay.
So, so, you know, there are some newer elected members and, and certainly folks who live in the city like me, I live in the forty-third. Um, will be really interested to see who is Maggie or who will replace Delegate McIntosh. Um, so when I, you know, meet people who are gonna be up for that position and talk to them about whether or not they can have my vote, one of the things I'll be asking them is, do you support an elected board?
Mm-hmm. And, and that's why, and that's why I asked it, you know, like I definitely don't want to put anyone on the spot, but we, we are approaching, uh, uh, you know, election season soon, you know, and I think people need to be asking those who are going to be running these questions, you know, so that's why I just asked for, you know, for, for myself and folks to, you know, out there to, you know, kind of know, like, um, because even before legislation start, like, you know, I, I feel like you should know where folks are getting ready to go and thinking about talking about. And if it's something that we want them to talk about, then we should be, you know, making sure that they know, um, but.
I just want to say that my senator, the best senator, um, is carrying the bill in the upper chamber. Uh, so, hey, that's Senator Joe P. Carter.
Got you. Um, got you. Interesting. So to make sure, what are, um, some things that's coming up in Annapolis, um, this coming session? That anyone know of?
Well, certainly, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna run this bill back. Unfortunately, pulled on the House side last year. And, um, when a bill was pulled in one particular chamber, it has to be pulled in the other chamber. So though it was pulled on the House side, we couldn't move forward with even a hearing, um, on the Senate side. And, you know, there was some, uh, conversations about strategy. Um, but the hearing would have been the time to like really, you know, identify who was for and who was against. Um, and I suspect that the person who was carrying the bill on the House side, didn't want to put their colleagues on, um, blast. But definitely, um, this will be, um, actual, uh, we, we hope to get a hearing this session.
Um, do we know why it was pulled? Did they say exactly why it was pulled or?
Um, they wanted more time to discuss, um, other avenues of strategy. I didn't agree, but I'm a part of a coalition and, you know, you just kind of do what the coalition wants. Um, but, you know, yeah, it, you know, you and I, we're both from West Baltimore. So, you know, you, you, we just come from a place of, you know, make people say, you know, what's on their mind, you know, uh, I don't really care about protecting colleagues' feelings. These are grown men and grown women who spent money to run for public office. If you feel a certain way about an issue, open your mouth and say it, uh, and hopefully that's what happens this year.
Yeah.
Because they don't have the moral argument, right? Like, you know, whoever argues, I think Melissa said earlier, like who argues against greater democracy? You know, who, who argues against expanded democracy, right? What, what, what argument can be made, you know, to say, we don't want to put the power of who represents us or who, who makes decisions about our kids' lives into the hands of the parents, into the hands of the people who are here, you know, who, who live here, who pay taxes here.
Mm-hmm. That, yeah, I, I should, did you want me to speak?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna add like, like, I don't, I don't know, like, I, I think that if the bill were to be introduced, like everybody said, like having it on the record, but also allowing like the community to organize around it, um, it's kind of like a missed opportunity. So you could have seen people like show up, that, that's an opportunity for people to give testimony. Or, um, you know, because one of the things that we were told is that the community, it doesn't, doesn't care about this issue or they don't want more elected seats, but there's no data like proving that. So that would, you know, that's one area where we should not have to do the heavy lifting to prove that democracy is cool. Um, that, like introducing bills and legislation, if it fails, let it fail and let us learn something from it, like, but at least like, you know, let's just see what happens. I think that's what we need to do going forward.
Absolutely.
It's a, you know, it's a whole demo, oh, I'm sorry, Melissa.
Oh, oh, no, I was just gonna, gonna say, um, and part of the, the reason that, um, I have heard members say why they pulled the bill or, oh, well, parents aren't interested in this is that, well, not a lot of parents or caregivers come to the school board meetings as is. And I'm like, because they're at five o'clock on a Tuesday. Do you know a lot of parents who are like, yes, I can totally make a meeting at five. It's not inconvenient at all. I don't need to feed anybody. I'm not working then, like, are you kidding? Um, and they only meet at North Avenue. Now it's online, so some people can kind of catch it on their phone or on their way to a place, right? But when we were in person, no, not a lot of people turned out because folks have jobs and kids and partners and pets to feed, right? Like, it's incredibly challenging for people to come out to the board. And I think that's part of the disconnect because a lot of electeds are like, well, we don't, we don't see and hear from parents on this issue. Well, no, because it, it, when was the last time you saw a board member in your community talking to you about your kids or your schools?
Yeah.
Because I've, I've lived here since oh seven and I have never seen one unless it was a photo op, ever.
Yeah, and I just, it's like on the accessibility piece, like, you know, the way this, the current thing is set up, you know, people, only certain people can participate. You know, there's not room for like eight, like a lot of notices that I've seen for meetings come very like, like, it'll be like the next day or within that week and people have to make plans for things like that. So, yeah, if there's little participation, I always point back to the person that's scheduling the things. If there's little participation, it's by design and there's also opportunities to have asynchronous participation. So, yeah.
No doubt. What, what would you all, what would you all say to critics? Excuse me. What would you all say to critics? Um, who say that making the school board elected makes the position political?
Well, the position is political either way. Um, there's no way you're gonna take politics out of it. So, um, you know, I would say, um, at the risk of, um, coming off like an asshole, if you think that politics is not already entwined in every decision that they make, then I would suggest, um, a strong. I would suggest um a stronger political education. I hate to say it like that, but I, I, I just gotta come right out and say that. And also what I wanted to say before you ask that question, Tyrone, is if you go just one hour, actually forty-five minutes of Interstate eighty-three north. You go into Pennsylvania, they frickin' elect everybody. Like, they literally are still electing constables for Christ sakes. Like, all of their judges, school boards, like, everybody is elected. So, you know, and this is like a battleground state, you know what I mean? Like, you know, ev- every four years, like Republicans and Democrats, like hashing it out. It's like in this very democratic grand state, in this very Democrat city, you know, I, I, I just can't comprehend. Um, you know, how it's such a, a, a controversial idea to put this power in the hands of the people. And also for, uh, you know, these uh people, Melissa said that someone on a board, I guess trying to rationalize why they pulled the bill. You know, people don't engage. Well, they don't engage because probably because they're not elected. So, there is no um calling or, or, or there is no need for a board member who's appointed by the mayor to engage with parents, to engage with teachers, to engage with students ever, because they don't have to. I mean, at least at bare minimum. If I wanna run for city council, at least I gotta knock at least some doors every four years. I might not be in the community for three years, but at least one year out of my term, I gotta actually be in the community. These board members don't have to do that at all.
Yeah, I agree. It's definitely like already political and like any type of political um office or appointment process without participation is just gatekeeping, period. And you can't rely on like self-selecting groups to really capture like the ideas of like the whole entire city. That just doesn't make any sense if the whole entire city doesn't have an opportunity to vote.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. The, the, the words and, you know, the the words and the passion behind the answers are definitely hitting the folks. Like, I just got like a ton of hearts and love and nuggets from Shaq and, you know, I totally agree and welcome and thank yous. Um, e- everything um to there and a- a- absolutely. Uh, I, uh, let me see this. Alia says, I totally agree. The police, the position is political either way. Being appointed by the mayor makes it political by definition. Absolutely, absolutely. Is there, so with, with, with things that you all have uh going on, um and work, but that you know of, what is the best way for folks who wanna get involved? And, you know, that wanna help or, you know, wanna learn, wanna know, stay gonna know just like, wh- wh- what's, what are best ways for people to get involved or get in contact with those who they should be?
Oh, we do have a Facebook page, like a Votes Coalition, Voices Towards An Elected School Board. Um, and then we do like have meetings and um meetings every Monday. So if they wanna plug in that way, and then we will be organizing in the future and having conversations about getting the student members voting rights, because that's one area that we can change quicker than like the whole. Um, yeah, like having more elected seats, like the voting member's already there. So we'd like to add like another voting member or another student member and then give them voting rights, because that, that perspective is missing from the voting. And there's other counties that had, that, where their student members do have voting rights.
And, and I'd say apart from those really good suggestions, um, if you have school friends, so you're on the PTA, PTO, Child and Family Council at your school, whatever you call it, talk to those folks. Talk to other parent friends you have, talk about it in your community spaces, you know, um. If you know your state legislators and you see them around town, cause many of us do. Um, at, you know, the farmer's market or the grocery store and you run into them, talk to them about it. Um, and, and make sure that they know where you stand. Um, I think spreading the word about this being an important issue and particularly telling other people about how different the city is, cause I think lots of folks m- maybe assume that other places around the state have an all-appointed board too. So, well, there's some elected and some appointed, and we just kinda fall in the mix. But that's not true. So, so highlighting that really significant difference, I think is a good place to start and talk to people about it.
Definitely. I, I definitely just wanna, if people, you know, always ask how, where, so I like to definitely make that point and at the, um, in the comment section, you all on Facebook, um, we have the, their uh, Facebook pin that Ashley just gave us, so definitely, uh, go and check that out. I wanna acknowledge a couple of comments so as well. As we have worked with the Alliance to Reclaim Our Schools on what people wanna see the next governor do. Over and over, we hear that people want people in decision-making around school to be required to have cool, to have kids in the system. That would be very, very, very uh fantastic and interesting, um, and great. School board members should absolutely be elected and there should be public funding with that. So it's not only a race between people who can already afford to run, or people who the corporate, the corporate ed reformers will pay to place. Thank you Natalia. Absolutely, absolutely. Are there any other thoughts of, uh, Ashley, you had? Sorry.
No, no, it was just cause of that comment. So, and, and I do think like there's ways that people can rally around people that are gonna be running, cause I'm hoping that there are, you know, people like what you just described that do run so that they can actually be the voice. Like I said, this first race is gonna like set the bar. So even if you don't have like money to donate, if you're, you know, if you care a lot about the issue, there's so many things that you can do, like you can share that this person is running, somebody that you're supporting, you can volunteer your time. Um, or you can run, you know what I mean? You can run yourself and then just organize around it. Like, I think the more people that are involved and plugged in and representing different areas and different perspectives are better.
Got you. Can, can you talk more about the funding for running? I wanna make sure I understand the question totally that came up.
So if the person's asking about like campaign finance, it's like other races.
Yes.
It's, it's, um, so it's a, right now, the two elected seats are n- non-partisan seats. So it's, there's no primary process, you just run. Um, so you raise money like you would for any other race. The two seats are citywide, that's pretty tough. Other places that have elected boards do it like by district or with a certain zone or catchment area, so that you're not trying to cover, you know, from Ashburton to Bayview, um, and in between. Uh, so anyway, um, you have to raise money. One of the things that the Votes Coalition, of which I'm a member, do. Um, and how I know Ash and Jack and lots of the other really smart, interesting people who um are given time to work on this. Uh, is that we're really interested in public financing for those elections, so everyone would get a pot of money to run on. And that would be it. And so that um would make us less beholden to those kinds of corporate interests or like dark money campaigns that you see other places where somebody from another state or county like descends and funds a candidate, cause they want them to privatize the school system. You know, or be like a little mini Larry Hogan sitting in Baltimore. Um, so to avoid that, we want, you know, we want two things. We want, again, a lot of that community involvement, so that we're really pushing as, as Ash and Jack have described, a grassroots candidate who's really of the people. Um, and knows the communities, um, and to public financing, so that we can keep a handle on who spends money in, in our communities and who they're supporting and want.
Is, is the school, but so are, okay, are school board members paid? Um, and if, eh, are school board members paid? If so, you made the whole question, um. If so, do other places do this? And where does the money come from?
So the school board members now are not paid, but yeah, in other counties, they are paid. Um, and I think that's important. That's one of the things that we're actually working on getting. Because that is a barrier to participation. So if somebody, you know, has childcare needs, like it's there has to be something to make it so that the most diverse people can participate. And, and yeah, they definitely need like some type of stipend or something, cause like having it be zero dollars is just like, usually people that can take on like volunteer board work during work hours or people that are in a pretty like privileged position. So I think, I think to, to make it more equitable, like having a stipend or, or some form of pay is good.
We don't talk about making it rain on people. We're just talking about something that is commensurate with the amount of work that they have to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and um, I put in the chat that we're all on, but I can just let folks who are watching Facebook Live know. Uh, it's a little bit old now, but there was a big national survey of nine hundred board members and over four hundred school districts across the country. And almost half of those board members said they worked um forty hours a month or more just on board responsibilities. So that's like, it's a whole part-time gig that we're not paying people for. And yeah, around the state, the highest paid jurisdiction in the state, um, right now. I know this will surprise everybody, is Montgomery County. Um, and they pay between twenty-five and twenty-nine thousand dollars a year for members. The board president makes the most and then it's twenty-five for the rest of the folks, but like Prince George's County pays, Waco-Maco pays, it's like three grand a year. Um, and even in places where they aren't paid, there's often reimbursement for some expenses like travel time. But yeah, in Baltimore City, you don't get paid, and where the money would come from could be the general education budget. Um, so the money that's already in the school system, or there could be in another appropriation um, from the state or the city or both to help offset the cost. And that is kind of a TBD, we gotta wait and see what happens.
Is, is there a required amount of hours for board members? Just like in Baltimore, do we have our own, okay. Okay, whatever hours, but you did definitely just mention, thank you for mentioning, mentioning about what other board members have already said, the amount of hours and which, which is a lot. Um, that's a lot of time in a month, um, to put in. Uh, public financing would be great. Um, thank you Yagi. Yes, if, eh, so is there, is there anything, any, any other points? Um, before we go that you all, you know, would like to take to get out and um let folks know about now about this, that, you know, that, that you just feel like someone, you know, I'm saying like need to know, or this, this is again what they need to do. Go ahead, Ashley.
Oh, I was just gonna say like for the elected officials, um, people, the, people that have like pushback over this, like I would just say that like, I, I would, I would say be transparent about the why, cause I think that's important. Uh, say exactly why if it's yeah, yeah, I think it would do a better, like if they were honest about the why, like it would it would, it would help us be able to navigate this whole situation, but um, that's, that's my main focus. Like, just be on the record and say why, because it doesn't make any sense. And it, and it's one of those things where, you know, we look around the city and we're like, why? Why are we different? Like, why can't we have the same thing as like other cities? And I, and I think like in order for us to, you know, have the best education system, like the people have to have more participation and they need to be heard.
You know, every year, um, they're recommending schools for closure. Um, last year it was kinda like a bye year because of COVID. Um, uh, two people have reached out to Communities United seeking support for clothes that are recommended for closure. And um, it kinda breaks my heart, um, because number one, I think Baltimore City Schools has like a, um, well, I'll leave that one alone, but like what can you do? They're not elected, they're appointed. So, you know, if they wanna close Utah Marshburn or any other school that's up for closure, you know, there's, there's, there's no recourse for everyday people like you and I, right? Tyrone, you're a Baltimore City Public School parent. Um, there's no way that we could ever hold a board member in the school system accountable for anything. Literally, the only way regular, everyday people like you and I can hold judges accountable, can hold school board members accountable, can hold anybody accountable, it's the power of a vote, the power of elections. Uh, and so if we don't have that, we don't have anything. We, we, we've conceded our power. We concede to get an elected school board, we've conceded our power. Um, and it just absolutely makes no sense at all to concede power when you don't have to. And actually, I'll end with this. That's why some people don't want an elected school board, because then they have to concede power, because if I could just appoint people. You know, I don't have to put money into elections or, you know, I don't have to, you know, buy people, pay people off, or any of the dirty things that we don't have in our politics every day. Um, and so there is, um, I think that's a really strong reason why some people don't want it, though they can, will they come out and say that? Um.
Uh, yeah.
We're not gonna give up our power, or continue to give up our power.
The only thing that I'd add is, um, I really hope it increases parent and caregiver representation on the board, cause right now, and this was mentioned before, right? Like, most people on the board right now do not have children or grandchildren in city schools. They don't. And if they do, historically, they've sent their kids to one of, of very few schools in the city that have very specific programs and very specific student populations that are not representative, right? Um, and so when you have that makeup of the board, where you have people who are removed from that actual experience of what it is like to have your kid or loved one in the school system, right? Or be a teacher in the school system or a paraprofessional in the school system, um. All you know is what you are told, and all you see is what people want you to see. You don't get the full picture, and I think that's really a hindrance to what Shaq and Ash were saying about reclaiming power and about knowing who's in our communities, because the board members now, like I said before, they're not out in the school system except for a scheduled event. And that means that their view of what happens is real limited. Um, and we don't, we can't hold them accountable, we can't request that they come more. I mean, I suppose we could, but it mostly falls on deaf ears. And, and that really narrow perspective is really troubling for a group of people that have incredible power over the school system, from the budget to hiring the CEO to principal evaluations. You know, to hiring and firing lots of people. Um, all of this power around policy development that they have is this really narrow little slice based only on what they're told.
And it, uh, and I could just say something, but that's, it's so annoying. Um, to me, and you know, the one, the one, the, well, of course, you know, we do have the school board meeting where we go and you get public testimony, which is, I think is, is not the best uh, process, given how many people, how much time you're getting everything, you know, but that you, they get to hear from us. Uh, but that's a whole number, that's, that's, like, that would be a whole nother, um, show, another topic and everything that, um, is a lot, but um, you are definitely without, so let me see, um, Ariada says they have no business speaker on our behalf, no vested interest. Uh, we are in crises. There's no such thing of surrendering our power. These are our children. Um, absolutely, um, I, I agree. So as things come up, you know, I'm saying, if there, if there's anything that we could do with our little group of people and fighters and warriors that we have out, parents, you know, and all that we have out that's going on, you know, definitely like, you know, let us know. We'll definitely put it out there. Um, so that folks can know, because we always get, um, you know, like these kinda questions, and if we have parents who are ready to, you know, get out there, um, as a small, you know, uh, group of folks, you know, again, we, we, we on grounds and we work with parents. Um, and then we have parents who are, you know, mentoring other parents and wanting to work with other parents. So, you know, again, anything in any way um, that we can get, um, I agree with what's been said just personally, you know, let me know, um, you know, a- as, as it gets closer to um session and if there are other bills that, you know, we need to put information out there to parents about, you know, to let them know so they can be on, definitely. Uh, please don't hesitate and send it to us. Let us know, uh, we will definitely put it out there and thank you. Um, everyone who's watching, definitely thank you. Great nuggets from all of you on the show, um, is with someone, um, just commented from you all, um, but we definitely wanna thank you all for coming out. Um, everyone who is watching, please join us Thursday. Um, everyone who is watching, please join us Thursday at Tyrone's house, we will be there. And then next Monday, we have a little something else going on, um, for the show. One thing I do wanna also mention. Uh, just cause I, right, right as we close out is on this Thursday, y'all, y'all know, unless we, we've tried to help like a family. In need around the holiday time and do something, so, uh, someone had reached out to me again and asked me what we're doing it again this month, so we are. And, and Thursday, I'll share a little bit more about it at Tyrone's house, but just be in mind if you want to, uh, last year, we wound up being able to give. You know, a family some cash, a whole dinner prepared, uh, for Christmas, some gifts and coats and clothing for a family that was really in need. So, uh, we definitely wanna do that, uh, again this year, um, and everyone enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you, Shaquille, Melissa and Ashley for being here, um, and sharing with us all. Peace out, oh, I'm sorry, all right, Tyrone's house is at five o'clock as well on Thursday, if that's what you were talking about. But any questions or anything, you can email me, uh, tyrone@tdp baltimore.org. Uh, or rebecca@tdp baltimore.org.